Somewhere between ten and twelve cents of your tax bill.
And my question is, properties on Oak Park Avenue and the Main Street South TIF, their total property taxes have increased after the TIF has gone into effect, correct?
Unrelated to the TIF.
Not necessarily.
In individual properties may have increased, yes, but I will say the TIF on the overall has actually gone the other direction. And one of the goals of the TIF is to raise the property values, correct?
Correct.
And one of the consequences of that is when the property values are raised, the tax burden on the individual owner has increased oftentimes.
Not automatically, and that is an incorrect assumption that that occurs automatically. There's multiple moving parts to the property tax equation.
Okay.
And increase in the EAV, if the taxing bodies did not increase their levies, as the village has not increased their levy for the past three years, if the EAV increased, your share should decrease for the village tax. It doesn't mean that your overall taxes did not still go up because what other taxing bodies have done.
Understood. So I'll just invite you, since now we're just getting to the point of talking around in circles, go on your own village website under the GIS and look at individual properties in the Oak Park South, or Main Street South TIF, and generally you will see increases in total property taxes. I understand the village says they maintain their levy. I also understand according to the county, the percentages go up based on documents that they provide, but go on your own site. You folks go on the village's site.
I don't have to do that, Steve. I have the EAV for all of the properties in the Main Street South TIF. I can look at it, and I can tell you that the EAV has gone out.
But you know that the property tax, the dollars paid by those property owners have increased.
It is possible.
Well, you know, like you say, you guys want to go around in circles, that's fine. This is what people are complaining about, because you put a TIF in, the purpose of the TIF is to increase property values.
Property values.
The result of it is the property tax burden on the homeowner increases, and that's why everybody is worried and are asking you to use caution and care in representing them in doing this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we go back one slide really quick, where they were talking about the redevelopment by Johnny's Body Shop? Is there going to be... He was there. You said that there's not going to be any, anything going on with houses right now, but if Johnny's is gone and they want to redevelop that, what happens to the houses right around there?
Nothing.
For sure?
Nothing.
It's just going to be in the area where Johnny's is?
Correct. Again, if you look at the map, the area that's in red for potential redevelopment in Johnny's Body Shop, look at what's around it. It's all residential. Johnny's Body Shop exists because of a zoning that existed 50 years ago. It's not appropriate today anymore.
Okay. So there's no chance of any of the residential being changed there at all?
No.
Okay.
Well, not unless the owners decide to.
Yes, thank you.
But that's not, you know, it's not...
Well, that's my backyard.
It's not the village's...
Johnny's is my backyard.
It's not the village's interest right now to do that.
I heard the rumor.
And the zoning for all of the purple area there is residential.
Okay.
So we don't see that changing.
All right. And then is Pandu at selling their property for the pond contingent on the Pandu at TIF going through?
No.
So we could still buy the property from them if there was no TIF?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? If not, I would like to ask if there's any comment from the village board. Seeing as there are none, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
A second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Yes. Item number two, consider approval of tonight's agenda. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, consider approval of the minutes of the special village board meeting dated May 17, 2016. May I have such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, before there's a move tonight, can we have the clerk correct the minutes?
All right.
It states that Bernard Brady was at attendance as a trustee that evening. Like his name removed, please.
Oh, I see. He's suggesting that Kevin Suggs' name be removed from the meeting because either that or that the time of swearing in would be added would perhaps work.
Well, no, and the president responding to the roll call was Bernard E. Brady.
Okay. Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor signify...
Second.
Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, consider approval of the consent agenda. May I have such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and Mr. Clerk, please do the honors.
Item four, the approval of the consent agenda. A, consider request for a block party permit on Saturday, August 6, 20216, from 6841 to 6933, 176th Place, from noon to 10:00 PM. B, consider request for a block party permit on Saturday, June 25, to 2016, at the BFW Post, 2791, on 172nd Street, from 67th Court, to Oak Park Avenue, from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. C, consider request for Good Shepherd Manor to conduct a raffle through June 27, 2016, with the winners drawn that day at the Odyssey Country Club. D, consider request from the United Services Organization, USO, to conduct a raffle from June 8, 2016, through July 16, 2016, with the winners drawn that date at Apple Chevrolet. And E, payment of outstanding bills in the amount of $827,116.36, as listed on the vendor board approval report dated May 20, May 27, and June 3, 2016.
Anybody from the board want anything removed from the agenda? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item four, consent agenda on roll call. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item number five, of Trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. I'd like to move to consider ordinance number 2016-0-028, granting a special use permit for Blake Brown on behalf of the Hilton North America to operate a business involving retail and wholesale incidental to a principal use. The zoning district is at the Hickory Creek Planning and Development.
May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this is for first reading this evening. This is a special use, as I stated, for Blake Brown. Allows for the operation of business involving retail, wholesale, warehousing service, and repair of some small hand tools. This is located at 18475 Thompson Court. Again, this is zoned ORI, PUD, Hickory Creek PUD. How is their operation? 7:30 to 4:30 Monday through Friday.
This would constitute first reading and direct the village council to draft an ordinance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I'd ask for the waiver of first reading for item number six this evening.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I move to consider ordinance number 2016-0-029, granting variations from the allowable number of signs and total allowable sign area for wall signage for International Kia at 8301, 159th Street, within the B5 Business Automotive Services District.
May I have a second with the first reading waiver? Thank you.
Thank you. Again, this is variation for the number and size of the signs. Some of our automotive dealers on 159th Street have requested that we... They try to stay as competitive as possible with Orland Park, so this would be basically the same compliance as they are in Orland Park.
This item is on for adoption. Is there anybody from the board that would care to comment? Anybody from the public that would care to comment? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item six, final with waiver of first reading. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number seven, Trustee Vandenberg.
Again, I'd ask for the consideration of waiving first reading this evening for item seven.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. I move to consider ordinance number 2016-0-030, granting variations from the allowable number of signs, total allowable sign area for wall signage, and maximum allowable height for a freestanding sign for family Hyundai.
First reading is being waived. Is there anybody on the board that has any questions? Is there anybody from the public that has any questions? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, this is with waiver of first reading.
Item seven, final on ordinance 030, waiver of first reading. Roll call. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I continue, I'd just like to add, for the last two items, you've noticed they're both for automotive dealerships. Over the past six or seven months, I've been working with staff. We're going to hopefully be working out a new sign ordinance that's going to be competitive to go along with Orland Park. We also did waive first reading based upon several zoning Board of Appeals meetings that had to be canceled over the last two months, so we're just trying to keep our automotive dealers as happy as possible. So thank you for your obliging by that, gentlemen. Item eight, I'd like to consider adopting resolution number 2016-R-017, approving a plat of easement grant for the properties located at 845 West 185th Street at 18460 South 80th Avenue, also known as Speedway.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is a plat of easement, vacation of easements, existing public utility and drainage easement conflicted with the proposed comm headlines. So they needed a plat of new easement to vacate the existing.
This item is up for adoption. Are there any questions from the board? Anybody from the public care to comment? Seeing as there are none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item eight, on final, resolution 017, roll call. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Abstain.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nine, Trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. I move to consider ordinance number 2016-0-031, granting a 16-foot, 6-inch variation for a fence where the front yard setback requirement is 25 feet at 1760070th Avenue in the R4 Single Family Residential Zoning District and within the Barrett Brothers subdivision.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. So our petitioners, Lawrence and Helen Brown, requesting a variation. This is to replace an existing fence at the exact existing location with a 6-foot wood fence. So this is just going to be cleaning up a little bookkeeping on our end.
This will constitute first reading and direction to council to draft the ordinance. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, Trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. I move to consider adopting resolution number 2016-R-018, approving and accepting a plat of subdivision for the Union Square Townhome Project at 6822, 6830, 179th Street, and 17884 to 17906 Oak Park Avenue.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks. This is a townhome development for four multifamily structures, 10 two-bedrooms, 7 three-bedrooms, for a total of 17 units located in north and south of 179th and Oak Park Avenue, also the form of Blue Fox or Gambonies for us older Tinley Parkians. This is located in the Legacy District, which is the zoned neighborhood general, and had site plan approval by the Plan Commission August 20, 2015.
This item is up for adoption. Anybody from the audience care to comment?
What's the price rate going to be at these areas?
These are market-rate townhomes.
Just like across the street where they work.
I'll defer to staff. I don't know what the...
Market rate? Okay, I got you.
Where's the parking on that?
It's in the rear.
The question is parking? Yeah, there's enclosed garages off the back. I'm sorry, I don't have a site plan on here. We had it at the last meeting. But the parking is off to the... Coming from the back, underneath the townhome?
Okay, that's Gambonies, the down Oak Park Avenue. Now, across the street where the parking lot is.
That's where we're talking about. Right, there's two sides. Yep.
It's the north and south side, 179th.
So am I.
Anybody from the board have any questions on this either? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 10, on roll call for final on resolution 018. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yay.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 11, Trustee Penito.
With the pool building season coming up, staff has presented some amendments that are in line with the new IRC residential codes. Basically, it amends our comprehensive building codes to change the fence height requirement, which is four feet by IRC. Ours is going to be changed to five feet, which I guess is a more common and expensive size. And I think there's a few other minor changes as far as licensing. All the pool contractors have to be licensed with the village. The bid bond amount, I guess, for electrical workers hasn't changed. It's the same it's always been. And that's about it.
This particular ordinance that's being requested is 2000... Would be labeled 2016-0-33, and it would be amending ordinance number 2007-0-40, which is the comprehensive building code for regulation. This ordinance would direct council to...
I don't know if I made a motion. I'd make a motion to do what I just said.
Oh, okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
In case I got missed. All right. I guess we're tired, too. This motion...
Past my bedtime, actually.
This motion would constitute first reading and, once again, direct legal council to draft ordinance, the amendment to ordinance number 2007-0-40. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, Trustee Penito.
Item number 12 is basically amendments to the municipal code. Basically, contractor renewals used to take place on January 1. It caused kind of a backup in the system, slowed everything down. So to make that more efficient, basically, they're going to have rolling deadlines, so contractor renewals won't all take place at one time. Do I have a motion to approve that?
This would be ordinance number 2016-0-34. Correct. Which would amend Chapter 110. And the second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? This item would direct council to draft the ordinance with this constituting first reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 13, Trustee Vandenberg.
Thank you. I move to consider ordinance number 2016-0-035, and writing, amending the village zoning ordinance for the purpose of updating the village's sign regulations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. This ordinance revises sign regulations in the zoning ordinance. It addresses inconsistencies and administrative difficulties with current sign regulations. This is the first phase of a comprehensive update. As I mentioned earlier, the staff is working on temporary signs, signs related to auto dealers, and signs within the Legacy District. The revisions address the following. It's clarified maximum sign face areas for each type of signage, regulates signage in a table of zoning district, change sign face area measurement to boxes, the geometry around the sign, update electronic message center requirements, create clear setback line of sight requirements for ground signs, and create clear letter height requirements for wall signs. Again, this is just to clear up some of the inconsistencies and make the interpretation of this ordinance more clear.
This item has been recommended by the Plan Commission for these text amendments, and this would direct council to draft an ordinance with this constituting first reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, Trustee Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I'd ask the board to consider our first reading ordinance number 2016-0-026, establishing pay scales and certain fringe benefits for fiscal year 2017.
Move a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This ordinance establishes the pay scales and certain fringe benefits for non-collective bargaining village employees during the current fiscal year, which began May 1 of 2016 and ends April 30 of 2017. This ordinance was discussed at the March 10, 2016 Committee of the Hole Meeting, where the manager gave a presentation on it and was recommended for approval.
This item is for first reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 15, Trustee Maher.
Thank you. I'd ask the board to consider authorizing the village manager and treasurer to sign the engagement letter for conducting the annual audit for fiscal year ended April 30, 2016, at an amount not to exceed $71,750.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
The village's auditors of record, RSM US LLP, formerly known as McGladrey LLP, have submitted the engagement letter related to conducting the annual audit for fiscal year ended April 30, 2016. This agreement provides for a total fee of $65,000 for the annual audit, which includes assistance in preparation and publishing and printing of the comprehensive annual financial report, and additional charge of $6,750 applies to the preparation of the statutorily required compliance reports for our active tax increment financing districts for a total of $71,750. These charges represent a 4% increase over the prior year's engagement proposal, and sufficient funds have been included in the 2017 budget. The current audit year will include the implementation of Gadsby Statement 68 Pension Related Disclosures, which is closely related to Gadsby Statement 67, which was implemented with the fiscal year 2015 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Due to the close relationship of these two pronouncements, it's important to maintain audit continuity throughout their implementations. There are statutory time constraints associated with the completion of the audit and TIF reporting that make it impractical to put this professional service out for bid through a RFP at this point in time. The village has been very satisfied with the services of this auditing firm, and it's recommended that an RFP will be issued for providing audit services for a multi-year period following the completion of the current audit. This item was discussed at the Committee of the Hole Meeting, held on May 10, 2016, and recommended for approval.
Thank you. This would authorize the village manager and treasurer to sign the engagement letter. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item 15, on audit. Roll call. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 16, Trustee Maher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time I'd ask the board to consider our first reading ordinance number 2016-0-023, adopting the prevailing wage rates for laborers, workers, and mechanics contractually employed by the Village of Tinley Park.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
This is an annual ordinance required by state statute acknowledging and requiring that the prevailing wage rates be paid for all applicable work contracted by the village. This requirement creates a level playing field for the labor costs of such contracted work. A copy of the ordinance is required to be filed with the Illinois Department of Labor and Secretary of State.
This is for first reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 17, Trustee Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask the board to consider adopting resolution 2016-R-016, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement for fleet maintenance of fire department vehicles with the Mokina Fire Protection District.
Second.
Thanks, Brian. The village budget includes funds for the maintenance and repair of large vehicles for the fire department. The equipment is specialized and requires mechanics with certifications beyond the standard vehicle mechanic. For the past several years, the Public Works Department and Fire Department have utilized the Mokina Fire Protection District to provide service to fire vehicles and found them to be an acceptable organization to provide such repairs and at a lower cost than are available through other third-party providers. The IGA includes a specific price table for standard repair and maintenance. This item was discussed at a Public Safety Committee meeting held May 3, 2016.
Thank you. This item is up for adoption. Anybody on the board have any questions? Anybody from the audience have any questions? Let the record reflect, there were none. Mr. Clerk?
Item 17, on approval of resolution 016 on roll call. Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Brady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Younger.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 18 and 19 are, is a companion ordinance, Trustee Younger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider entering into agreement with HD Waterworks Supply for the purchase of water meters.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Earlier this year, the village conducted a competitive bidding process for the purpose of establishing a contract with a qualified vendor to purchase water meters. The bid specifications required the bidder to be able to provide a water meter that had features that included but are not limited to the following: provide remote meter reading capability, independent bandwidth related to remote metering technology, establish product history of reliability and accuracy within Chicagoland area, and a 20-year warranty on the meter. Bids were received March 29, 2016, and the village received one bid response by HD Waterworks Supply. The bid document provides for unit pricing for various meter sizes and types and related equipment, radios and touchpads, as well as the hardware and software for implementing the advanced metering infrastructure. The total value of the contract is dependent on how many meters and types of meters and radios are purchased. The census family of meters are only available through the regional distributor, HD Waterworks Supply Incorporated, who has supplied the bid proposal. The pricing schedule provided under the bid less than the price the village could otherwise obtain these meters in the normal course of business due to the greater volume of units expected to be purchased under the contract. The pricing is competitive to what has been offered to other area communities and water systems who have recently undertaken bulk water meter changeouts. Upon review of the bid, it was determined that HD Supply provided the village with the best cost for the meters as outlined in bid specifications. The majority of the meters purchased will be for residential-sized I-PER meters at the rate of ninety-eight dollars per meter. Funds for this project contract are included in the fiscal two thousand seventeen budget. This item was discussed April twelfth, two thousand sixteen Committee of the Hall meeting and was recommended for approval.
This item is to enter into agreement with HD Waterworks for the purchase of water meters. Anybody on the board have any questions about it? Anybody from the public have any questions?
Is this the six-and-a-half-million-dollar water meter deal? How much are you going to cost?
I'll defer to the treasurer to see what... It's going to be in two increments. It's going to be over twenty-four months.
Items eighteen and nineteen are related to that six...
Would it be more feasible if we just replace the bad ones as they come up? Say, if there's a thousand a year, if there's only... How many year...
The functionality on these meters is just very different.
And the batteries are not replaceable.
I got you. I didn't know everything. Okay.
Got you.
This is different supplier.
Absolutely.
I believe this supplier is the one the neighborhood, the surrounding neighbors or neighboring communities are using, and they have no problems from what I hear. I hear they're really good.
That's our understanding as well.
Was there no warranty service on any of these meters? Do the many measures get...
Oh, God. There's a long story here. I'll defer to...
Long story short, that I believe the board signed off on agreement...
Hundred eighty-six thousand.
It was a hundred eighty-six thousand a settlement a couple of years ago, and then I believe they're out of business in the United States.
Yeah, so at least we've got someone to pick. Anyway, how about the warranties on the new ones?
A twenty-year warranty.
Okay. Does that cover installation too?
No.
No.
That's the next item.
That's the next one. Yeah, we're getting there.
No.
No. It's the replacement of the meter.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item eighteen on new water meters. Roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number nineteen, Trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consider entering into an agreement with United Meters Incorporated for the installation of water meters.
Do we have a second?
Earlier this year, the village conducted a competitive bidding process for the purpose of finding a qualified contractor to assist the village with replacement of village water meters and associated equipment hardware. Bids were received March twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen, and the village received two proposals from qualified contractors, United Meters and Cal City Plumbing of Calumet City. The bid documents provided for unit pricing for meter and radio installation, various sizes and configuration, as well as other parts and services that may be required in addition to the standard installation, such as valve replacements. The total value of the contract under the respective bid submissions is dependent upon how many meters and radios would ultimately be installed by the selected contractor, as well as the meter size and ancillary equipment and services provided. The unit pricing provided by United Meters, with limited exception, is more favorable than the other bidder. The pricing is particularly favorable for the standard residential meter installations at the rate of a hundred and ten dollars per meter, which includes installation of the radio transmitter on meter, and that will compromise the bulk of the contract work. In instances where the home has two meters, indoor and outdoor for irrigation, that will be changed at the same time, two meters... The final contract price will be determined by the total number of meters and/or associated equipment that is installed by the contractor. Funds for this project and contract are included in the fiscal two thousand seventeen budget. This item was discussed also on April twelfth, two thousand sixteen Committee of Hall and recommended for approval.
Once again, this is to contract with United Meters for install. Anybody on the board have any questions? Anybody from the audience care to comment?
Hey, Brian, how much did you say this is going to cost us for these meters? Did you say that or no? Do we have a total?
Depending on how many that we put in.
A hundred and ten.
For the installation, it's a hundred and ten.
How about for the whole thing? Do we have an estimate? Is it going to be millions?
Correct.
So, we accepted a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, and now we're going to spend six, seven million dollars. And if I understand correctly, that was recommended by Kleinthorpe and Jenkins? To accept that offer, or am I wrong?
It was prior to us being on the board. I'm not quite sure.
I mean, that was a recommendation by staff, and I mean, I'm not sure council, how heavily they get involved in those things. I think it's usually just a question of what problems there are and what they thought it was to correct it, and basically before they went belly up to try to get something before the turnip was, you know, gone. I think it was done with the best information at the time. Keep in mind, too, that these were ten-year warranted meters. They basically are at the end of their useful ten-year lives by now as well, if I'm not mistaken. I mean, perhaps Tom would like to comment a little further.
Yes, that's correct. The Elster Seven Trent meters that are mostly installed right now in the village do have a ten-year warranty, and the good number of the meters are at that point, if not passed, and the rest are soon to be at that point. So now with the new meter that we're looking, that has just passed, it does have a twenty-year warranty. The battery and the accuracy as to... The accuracy for twenty years at the... Throughout the length, and then the battery, hundred percent replacement at ten years and prorated year ten through twenty, or eleven through twenty. And this will go and give us additional data to where we will be able to have the consumption on an hourly basis compared to how we currently are doing it with this Elster Seven Trent meter, to where, say, we read it on January first, April first, we go and read it again, and the difference between the two is the consumption. We're able to go deeper into it and have more data for any potential leaks or situations that come on up that have to be investigated at the request of the customer.
Customers will likewise have access online to this data as well, so customers will be able to monitor their usages.
We don't... There's no type of insurance or anything that we carry for issues like this? Instead of paying out the six million, that something would cover this when we, as you mentioned, the turnip, we took a hundred and eighty-six thousand so we could pay out seven million? There's no insurance at all that would help us alleviate the pain?
You had a piece of equipment that was at the end of its life.
You guys were talking over each other, Brad.
Go ahead, Brad.
The hundred eighty-six settlement with the warranty on the old meters is a separate arrangement from what was being proposed here, and every utility system periodically has to go through a replacement of meters, and we... The village has done that numerous times over the life of our water system, and we've now just decided at this point, rather than continue to replace these other meters as they fail, is let's get them all done at one time and do it all at once.
But we paid from the last a certain number of years, and so now we're just going to pay again.
It's part of operating a utility.
If it's a ten-year-life meter, it's the end of ten years, it's time.
But this has been going on for years.
It's...
Like I said, as I understand, it was recommended by Kleinthorpe and Jenkins, which whoever's responsible on this board for bringing in the new attorney kindly, I appreciate it.
I mean, I would suggest that the recommending... The recommendations came primarily from the Public Works Director at the time.
Sheppers?
Yes, sir.
The one that's...
Go on. Yes, sir.
And that was partially responsible for the...
For the management of the problem, yes. And the management is... I can tell you, I think, as I've said on multiple occasions, we were not pleased with the management of that problem. I want to commend Trustee Yonker for getting his arms around this thing and basically working to replace the problem, and I can guarantee you that as we go through these replacement meters and as we see variations in readings, that there will be corrections made, and people would make whole if they were hurt.
Has there been an investigation into the resignation that followed with the meters in regards to him, or no? Or is it just he resigned and that's it?
He resigned.
That's the end of it? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other comment? Sure.
Maybe taking that a little further. An ex-employee, retired employee of Tinley Park Water Department, came up to me twice, once again last week, and he stated same thing twice, that the guy that sold the meters knew that they were bad when he sold them to us, and that the guy in Tinley that signed off on them knew they were bad when he signed off on them. Did you hear that from anyone, or... Basically, we knew, they knew. It sounds to me like a scam.
Well, I'm not aware...
Maybe that's what he's getting to. I mean, this is an ex-employee of Tinley. He was on the village water department.
I mean, I...
Obviously, fifteen years ago, I don't know, but I do know the meters were new to the market.
But this is some of the stuff that, on the street, we hear, Mayor. You know, people coming up to us saying, yeah, they knew they were bad, I was there, blah, blah, blah. Not only that, they installed some, came back, and even ordered more, and we knew they were bad. And that's maybe why, you know, we're a little upset about the meters and such, okay?
We were all upset, believe me. We were not pleased with the management.
And I think the new meters, Mayor, and residents...
Ah, here they're fantastic.
I think that we're going to try to help restore the trust and be able to have access for the homeowners to... If there's a leak, they could be notified via email or text message. There's a lot of features with this new meter.
There's some other towns going to these new meters as a wholesale change that haven't had the problems we've had, just because there's so many benefits to it, so I think it would be a good change even if we didn't have the problems with the old meters.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any plan in place to reimburse those folks who have been grossly overcharged on their water bills?
Yes, there have been over six hundred refunds, if I'm not mistaken, thus far.
Do you know what the average was for those refunds?
I mean, I guess, yeah, it is the subject of litigation. I guess I can't talk about it, but it is... There have been, you know, we've... We're trying to make people right, and I think with these new meters in place, we'll be able to manage and monitor to see if there were any, you know, historic discrepancies, I guess, probably the right way to put it.
Because I was grossly overcharged last year, and I called to complain about it, and I was pretty much told by the woman, pay your bill, we're turning your water off.
Well, talk to our staff here and we'll revisit it.
Okay.
Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item nineteen on roll call on meter purchases, United Meters actually installation, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carried. Item number twenty, Trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider awarding a one-year extension under the contract with Denler Incorporated for crack sealing.
May I have a second?
The annual crack sealing program entails filling cracks in the roadbed to protect the road base from moisture damage. By performing crack sealing, the life of the road surface is typically extended by two to three years. Approximately three hundred seventy-three thousand feet of crack filling expected to be done during the two thousand sixteen season. This item was discussed May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, Public Works Committee, and recommended for approval.
May I have a second? No, I'm sorry. This item is on for first reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-two, Trustee Yonker.
Twenty-one, consider... I'd like the board to consider approval...
Twenty-one or seventy?
Twenty-one.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
He's reading twenty.
We're on twenty, okay, that requires a roll call. Mr. Clerk, please do it.
Item twenty, one-year extension contract for crack sealing, roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Yay.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, item number twenty-one, Trustee Yonker.
I'd like the board to consider approval of Resolution two thousand sixteen dash R dash two zero two zero, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Tinley Park and the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for construction and perpetual maintenance of stream bank stabilization of Midlothian Creek.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
The Metropolitan Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago has identified several points along the drainage way commonly known as the Midlothian Creek where active stream bank erosion is causing a threat to structures, infrastructure, and public safety. For one of these risk points, the MWRD has identified the stabilization of approximately four hundred ninety-five linear feet of the Midlothian Creek lying east of Sixty-Six Court and north of the Metro Railroad tracks would provide increased protection of the existing structures from potential damage due to erosion. The project entails stabilization of the channel and naturalized bank reinforcements, including rock, armoring, coconut fiber, logs, riff pools, and planting of deep-rooted vegetation. The project is estimated at a cost in excess of four hundred thousand dollars and will be contracted and paid for by the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District in order to proceed with this project. The MWRD requires an intergovernmental agreement with the village that outlines a project to be undertaking and provided a jurisdictional transfer of the responsibility for the project improvements once they are completed. The project area of the Midlothian Creek runs through the private property containing the Harper Hill Townhome Association. The Townhome Association has provided necessary easements for the project and the project area. The project will have three-year growth and warranty period to assure the stabilization of vegetation is properly established. The Harper Hill Townhome Association and the village will also inspect the improvements prior to the transfer and maintenance responsibilities at the end of the three-year period. This project and IGA were discussed at the Public Works Committee meeting held on May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and recommended for approval.
This item is for first reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number twenty-two, Trustee Yonker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like the board to consider Resolution two thousand sixteen dash R dash zero two two, approving the submission of a project application to the Illinois Department of Transportation for funding under the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Projects Program.
And this is waiver of first reading that's requested?
Yes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael.
Ida has begun accepting applications for the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. Applications are due by Friday, June seventeenth. There are approximately twenty-nine million dollars available to award to selected projects. The ITEP will be a two-year cycle that will call for projects anticipated to be in spring of two thousand eighteen. The village believes that the conversion of Eighty-Fourth Avenue from one hundred fifty-ninth to Nielsen Drive to be a complete street would be a good project to submit for consideration. The project would be classified as a pedestrian bicycle facility under ITEP application guidelines. The project would consist of resurfacing the roadway, restriping and signage from one hundred fifty-ninth to one hundred seventy-ninth to accommodate on-street bike lanes. The section of one hundred seventy-ninth to Nielsen Drive would be widened and resurfaced to accommodate on-street bike lanes. The estimated cost of the project is three million dollars. Funding in the amount of one million two hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars is available through the South Suburban Mayors and Managers Association for the resurfacing between one hundred fifty-ninth and one hundred seventy-first. So the request to ITEP would be one million seven hundred and thirteen dollars. As a lead agency to maximum village share, local match would be twenty percent or six hundred thousand, because the Cook County Highway Department has jurisdiction over a portion of the project. It is expected that they would also contribute to the local match in order to meet the June seventeenth deadline. Waiver of the first reading is requested.
Anybody on the board have any questions? This item is up for adoption. Anybody in the audience care to raise any questions?
Is this kind of like what they did in that, on a hundred and fifty-six thousand three or forty years ago? Were they kind of like resurfacing it? Like, like...
Yes.
Any other questions? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Item twenty-two, final on Resolution zero two two with waiver of first reading. Roll call, Trustee Maher.
Yay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Penito.
Yes.
Trustee Vanenburg.
Yay.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-three, Trustee Yonker.
I'd like the board to consider awarding a contract to FH Passion for the Fire Station Three boiler replacement project.
May I have a second?
The proposed project is for the removal of one existing boiler along piping controls The proposed project is for the removal of one existing boiler along piping controls for replacement with one four-ton package rooftop air handler that will be required to accommodate the higher efficiency rating of the new system. The project also includes all related facility repairs necessary to complete the job. The proposed contract award is part of the State of Illinois Competitively Bid Job Order Contracting Program. Funds for this project are included in the current fiscal year budget. This item was discussed at the Public Works Committee meeting held on May thirty-first, twenty sixteen, and recommended for approval.
Item number twenty-three is an expenditure of funds. Mr. Clerk.
Item twenty-three. Awarding contract to Passion. Roll call. Trustee Maher.
Nay.
Trustee Grady.
Yay.
Trustee Panito.
Yes.
Trustee Vandenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Yonker.
Yay.
Trustee Suggs.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twenty-four. I would ask that the board consider splitting this ordinance only because there are two requests here, and because of the fact that there may be some controversy, I would like to have them separate just for purposes of discussion. So I would like to ask that twenty sixteen dash O dash twenty-seven, amending Title eleven, Chapter one twelve, Section one twelve twenty-two of the Tinley Park Municipal Code, addition of, I will suggest at this point, one Class E license, and this one would be related to the request for a park and stay cafe, a restaurant and gaming facility to be located at the corner of ninety-four oh one West one seventy-first, and I'd like to ask for a motion.
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This item is up for first reading. I have to tell you that after some consideration, I have got a number of reservations with a video gaming facility located in a car wash. It has been a concern of mine, the unrelated use request, and I have to tell you, I have got three of them sitting on my table right now, one to go into a laundromat, and another one to go... Where does the other one go, Paul? Do you remember? Oh, in a liquor store. Package liquor store. Package liquor store, which probably makes more sense in some cases, and I guess you can almost construct a case for that one, but I've got to tell you that these unrelated uses are troubling to me, and, you know, I think that that's the pause that I have with this. I'm clearly not a voting member on this, but I have to tell you that I think there's some reservations that I have with this particular request. I don't know if there are any other comments from the board on this one. This would be for first reading. Obviously, there'd be a chance a second reading to adopt, but I have concerns.
Mr. Mayor, I know we've discussed this before, but can we bring this up as far as gambling cafes in general, as far as maybe putting something together at, I don't know which committee you'd want to put that on?
There's going to be... It's already on the committee, the whole agenda, which will be a separation of liquor licenses by with and without video gaming, so that there's visibility as to, for instance, the next request here is for Blaze Pizza. Now, they've got no interest at this point in having a video gaming, you know, facility there, but once given the license under a present structure, they could go to the gaming board and request one. The structure that's been recommended by council would basically make these two separate categories so that there would be visibility across the board, which I think is important to you, the public, and I think it's important to us, is the board that ultimately, you know, has to be accountable to you. Anybody else on the board have any comment? I mean, please.
I think this gentleman who's presented, the car wash owner who's asked for it, I think he seems like a really good guy. Obviously, I'd like to help him out.
I agree.
My problem is liquor in a car washer. Drop your car off, you have a couple of drinks, you get back in it and drive. I'm very concerned about that. I'm also not a giant fan of gambling, which, you know, I don't know, so that's my reservations.
This item is for first reading. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion denied. Item number twenty-seven. I don't think we can separate this as A or B, or just call it twenty-seven now, since it would just be for one license. Yeah.
Call it twenty-seven B for tonight.
Item twenty-four, but the ordinance, I'm worried about this. All right, this would be for item B on this particular one. This is a request from Blaze Pizza at one fifty-nine oh three South Harlem Avenue. Video gaming has not been requested, and I believe staff has confirmed that with the petitioner, such that this is...
That is correct. I also have that in writing from the petitioner.
Strictly a Class E wine and beer license. This is for first reading, since this... We get a lot of conversation about this. Is there any questions from the board? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number twenty-five. Comments from the board and staff.
I have some.
Mr. Clerk.
Yes, I know we're very late, but this is good news. Over ten years ago, the state started early voting. It actually was voting before that, but it became major. Regretfully, our village did not reach out in that time, and so all of our sixty thousand or most citizens had to early vote in towns around us. By the way, a Chicago Aldermatic ward is less than fifty thousand, and they all have three early voting locations within their wards. Through the good work of a number of folks at David Orr's office, and I've been writing him every since, and our own staff, particularly Laura Godette, I'm pleased to announce that beginning this year, early voting will be conducted in the Village of Tinley Park at the Village Hall for... From Monday, October twenty-fourth to Monday, November seventh, to include two Sundays. So thousands of our citizens will be able to come here, and in the memo to us, I'm not sure what prompted it, other than we were whining, but that doesn't usually work, does it? Anyhow, the one thing I noticed is, and this is good and interesting, from the county clerk's office, that we expect the turnout for this election to be historic, and so early voting will be for us even better. Thank you.
We appreciate that, and we appreciate those efforts to change that. I've been long disappointed with that process, and I'm pleased to see that we're able to offer that service to our constituents. Anybody else from the board have any comment? Any staff have any comment? Anybody from the audience have any comment? Please step on up. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Has there been any consideration to limiting the number of gaming machines?
No, we've been using the separate approach that the council has recommended to limit the... To basically manage the licenses by type of video gaming, so that would address that.
Okay. At the very least, I mean, because it's not my thing, my cup of tea, but at the very least, can you consider an ordinance against the storefront to gaming cafes? I think they're... You know, I'm not for them. That's fine, them being in restaurants, what have you, but the storefront cafes, I think, are just... They don't do much for the appearance of our village, quite honestly. I've driven through a neighboring township, well, not actually neighboring, but to see them one after the other, I think we can do better than that.
I think there are a number of considerations that we're going to be looking at to address that issue. It could be distance, it could be limitations, but everything's on the table right now.
I think the citizens advisory.
Beth, it's going to be discussed at the committee of the hall next week.
Next week?
Yes.
All right, very good. I'll be there. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Yes, sir.
I just have a quick question about a clerk raised, previous comment. So does this mean that, is this early voting only going to be in Tinley Park Village Hall for this single election, or is it going to be a continuous thing thereafter?
We think it's... Oh, I'm sorry. We think it's on a go-forward basis. By the way, this does not include our Will County residents.
Okay.
And because we're two counties, but at least Cook responded. If I can go off the record, I didn't even get a reply to my phone calls or letters from the Will County clerk. It's more than suspect.
Okay, so then going on, then I no longer have to vote at, like, Orland Park Village Hall for early voting? I'm sorry, so then for, like, future elections, I no longer have to vote at Orland Park Village Hall, I can just stay within Tinley Park?
Yes.
Okay, cool. That's awesome.
Yes, sir.
I... Trustee Maher and I know Trustee Vandenberg have commented on this before, so I don't know who I should direct this question to. Maybe even the village manager. I have, you know, there's been... I haven't been to any committee of the halls about the sports complex talk. I remember last meeting, you had a lot of things to say about it. Has anyone in this survey done anything about checking the hotels for occupancy rates, see where we're at before we... Is this part of the whole picture?
I don't believe that there's been a study completed yet. I mean, Trustee Maher, this is the finance committee that this...
I can tell you, our occupancy rates have been pretty high, over sixty percent. Pardon? Are they really? Yeah, I don't... I'm not sure what... Not... We haven't looked at occupancy related to this project.
But we're right around eighty? We're around eighty percent as we sit now, you think?
Yes.
Okay.